It is three. Okay, so, good afternoon. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Okay. Welcome, everyone. We did earlier have a closed session. There will be something coming out of the closed session in on the council agenda later this afternoon. I do want to recognize that councillor Strength is joining us via livestream, and that councillor Johnston is unable to join us today. And therefore, I do have this, but I wonder if it should be as amended because councillor Johnston is not here for his report. So, it is moved by councillor Cairns, second by councillor Hunter. Be it resolved that the committee of whole agenda, March 18th, 2025, be approved as amended. We'll be removing councillor Johnston's update. All in favor? And that carries. Thank you. Councillors, any disclosures of pecuniary interest today? Councillor Cairns?
Thank you, your worship. Through you, just to err on the side of caution, our speaker that's coming for a deputation in regards to Spark Muskoka.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Jorgensen, I believe you're going to deliver our land acknowledging statement.
Thank you, your worship. We'd like to begin today's meeting by acknowledging the First Peoples, who for thousands of years before us were and are still the keepers and caretakers of this land, where we now live and work, and in particular, the Chipwas of Rama, Wata, Mohawk First Nations, and the Moon River Métis. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nation, Métis, and Inuit people. We recognize all the generations of Indigenous people and their historic connection to this place, and we are grateful for the opportunity to gather here at this time.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Jorgensen. Then I will now invite, we have two deputations today, and the first one is Geoff Lehman, Chair of the District of Muskoka for District of Muskoka Update. So, welcome, sir.
Thank you. What a great podium. It says "Welcome, Geoff Lehman" on it. That is high-tech. And congratulations on the technology in the chambers here. It seems to be really good. That's helpful for everybody watching at home. Thank you, your worship, members of council.
Yes, and an upgrade. I think the last time we saw you was at the Centennial Centre.
Was at the arena. Yes.
We were all passing a mic around. So, yeah, big upgrade.
It's a pretty big upgrade. It's the romance, the true romance of municipal government meeting in an arena meeting room, right? But thank you very much for the time on council's agenda today. What I plan to do with it, with your permission, your worship, is got about a 10, 11-slide presentation. And then, we've got, I've got a series of notes, just talking specifically about what the district's been doing here in Gravenhurst, and then obviously, as long as you would like, in terms of questions and answers. So, my purpose in being here today, members of council, is to give you an update at the halfway point of the term. We're a little past that point now, but on the progress that the district's made on our strategic priorities, the big issues affecting Muskoka, and of course, here in the town. At the beginning of our term, and I think I get to advance this, don't I? Where should I point it, Scott? There we go. All right. And even buzzes. This is high-technology. I'm impressed. At the beginning of district council's term, the 22 of us sat down, of course, a number of new members of district council, and the district strategic plan hadn't been updated in quite a long time. So, we sat down, said, "What do we want to get accomplished in this term?" We set out 10 major priorities in four themes: our environment, our community, our services, and our team. And within those 10 priorities, there are a total of 81 actions, and that is our action plan for Muskoka over four years. This is the number of actions within each area, and really, the takeaway from that slide is that you can see the community priorities really as it's the largest area of focus. And when I get to it in the deck here, you'll sort of see why. But the progress we've made, you know, at the halfway point in council, it takes a long time to accomplish things when you're talking about substantial change in a community and big issues that require a lot of different organizations to get together. And so, these are multi-year goals, but we have completed 7% of the actions in the plan, 80% underway, and 12% that will start this year. Okay, so what we decided to do this year is, we've got four slides, one on each of these themes, and some sort of key numbers to report progress to you, council. But then the second slide in each theme is a story. And the reason we wanted to tell those stories is to give you a bit of an example of the impact of what we do. When I was here last, I think I probably said to you that it's really important as municipalities that we don't just report on how much we do stuff. We need to report on the impact that it has. So, it's one thing to say, you know, we have X number of lane kilometers of road that we've maintained. But are we actually improving the condition of the roads, or are they actually getting worse every year? That's the sort of pavement condition metric. So, what we've tried to do with these stories is just to sort of tell a little bit of the story of what the district services impacts are. Within the environment, we have a climate change strategy, the New Leaf Climate Change Strategy. It has a lot of actions within it. We have made some progress starting that work. We've had over 100 events engaging our residents on the environment. And this is everything from shoreline remediation to presentations, workshops, and so forth. We all remember well those very difficult days that you went through and we went through in South Muskoka at the end of November with the storm. At that point, you know, notifying our residents and communicating to residents, I got a real lesson in just how many people pay attention to the Muskoka Bulletin Board Facebook group. But I can tell you that the official channels became very, very important. And so, the Voyant Alert app, which the district uses to notify people in emergency situations, we've been trying to push people to sign up for that. And we have got almost 2,000 more people over the last two years that have subscribed to that. And we would like to grow that even further. And then a key piece of our managing climate change, or adapting to climate change, is improving the resiliency of our own facilities. And so, now when we build a building, we tend to add additional features to perform better in terms of energy, which saves the taxpayer money down the line, but also things like backup power, very, very important, obviously, in a healthcare facility, a paramedic station, those sorts of things. So, the story under the environment theme, one of the things we're very proud of at the district is our geographic information system, which has LiDAR mapping, which maps all of the terrain, all the land in the District of Muskoka at a very precise level. What we were able to do for one of our residents who came in and said, "You know, I have flooding every year. How can I flood-proof my property?" We're able to work with them to map exactly where the risk is most severe, where the water would spread to, and so it helped them design flood-proofing measures and probably save a little bit of money doing that. But that's unfortunately on everyone's mind, I think, this time of year. But it's one of the ways we can use information like this to help our residents. Okay, "Our Communities" is the theme that rolls up a number of key aspects of what the district is trying to do this term. Housing, key among them. About a year ago, district council committed $35 million as part of our big move on housing. That is an investment to create a total of 444 new units over five years. To date, we've done 88, and this picture's a few years, a few years, a few months old. That's 100 Pine Street in Bracebridge. It's two stories in the picture. It's four stories now, and they're just starting work on the roof. When that building's occupied, it'll be 44 units, as I said, for seniors. The rent for every one of those apartments will be less than $1,000 a month. And so, it's really hitting a key need: older demographic, people on fixed income who can't afford what the market is charging for a one- or two-bedroom apartment in Muskoka. We also offer rent supports and a variety of other incentive programs, and I'll talk a little bit about the impact of that in Gravenhurst in a minute. Our target for childcare is to create 373 new childcare spaces across Muskoka by the end of four years. We're at 181 today, so exactly halfway there. And this is the $10-a-day daycare program that the federal government launched through the provinces. We're making good progress there. Still lots more work to do, but making progress. Paramedic services, we're expanding over the course of 10 years through a master plan. Of course, that involved a night shift here in Gravenhurst. That was our major investment in expanding paramedic coverage last year in 2024. And that obviously provides better coverage here in the town. In East and West Muskoka, in Georgian Bay and Lake of Bays, there is an additional ambulance and eventually a station to come that will help us dramatically improve the response time. Our response times are excellent in the towns. It's always a challenge in rural areas anywhere. But the better we can offer the coverage, the more lives we can save and change in a good way. Community transportation was launched right here in Gravenhurst, and that is the district's adaptive responsive transportation, which is curb-to-curb, as I'm sure you're familiar with. It is serving just Gravenhurst and areas of South Muskoka right now. And I'm grabbing my phone because I just got the updated boarding statistics. Up to 226 we had last month here in the town. And people are pretty happy with the service. Our average customer rating is 4.72 out of 5, if you're interested, on the app. And about 2/3 of the rides are booked on the app. The other 3 are booked by phone. You can do either. So, we did want to tell this story about a resident here in Gravenhurst, who's part of the community paramedic program. She was happy to have our story shared. Our community paramedics, if you're not familiar with the program, they visit people for scheduled appointments in their homes to monitor and help them with chronic conditions. And that is all in the hopes of avoiding 911 calls and emergency room transports. Our community paramedics were able to visit this lady's home, help her with her medication because she was showing signs of cardiac issues, got on the phone with her doctor, and that prevented her having to go to the hospital. And through remote monitoring, we're able to continue to support her at home. This is part of the solution to the problem we're seeing with hospitals, where people are stuck in hospital because there is no support to, or there isn't enough support to be able to keep them at home. And the district's community paramedic project is part of that. Well, this picture's from Gravenhurst as well, and that picture became famous because it was on the front page of the Toronto Star on, I think, the 1st of December. That's Darcy Medland. He's a super with Muskoka Paramedic Services. And he's running back from a car that was trapped on Highway 11 to the cat, the tracked vehicle that Muskoka paramedics operate. We bought that vehicle last year, not realizing how badly we would need it later in the year. And turned out, we were able to use that vehicle to go help people on the highway and here in the town during the emergency. We have made a large number of service delivery improvements across our services. And we've really been trying to get the word out about what we do, and that's through increased communication. We've seen a big increase in our social media engagement. But a lot of people ask, "What does the district do?" There's lots of confusion sometimes between what's provincial, what's district, what's local. I'm sure you've encountered that. We try and get the word out better, and we're receiving a lot more engagement on our channels. One thing we do that people aren't always aware of is income tax clinics. We have volunteers who will help seniors complete their income tax forms and assist them in getting the benefits that they're entitled to by doing that. We did 600 returns two years ago. We did 800 last year. And when I say "we," I didn't do any of them. Our volunteers did them, and our staff. We have a number of staff who volunteer with that service as well. Our story in this one, you know, we all try, always try and access technology that can assist us in using our services. It used to be, until last year, the district could inspect about 1/3 of our road network each year. And so, our road data at any given point was up to three years old. As we all know, road conditions change weekly, not every three years. And so, that really needed to be done more often. And we've actually got a contractor who uses AI to assess the data that comes in through a faster scanning system. And we've actually put all this data online. You can go on Engagement Muskoka and find a map that shows the condition of every segment of every district road. But the really important improvement that this brings to us is spending money more smartly, or smarter. It allows us to make better investment decisions when it comes to preventative maintenance and investing in roads because we have better data on the condition. Often a road that's in rough shape on the surface, it's just the surface, and you can get away with maintaining the surface. Sometimes, though, underneath, you know, the base is in terrible shape. And if you don't get to those kind of projects when you need to, they can get incredibly expensive. Last area of focus is our team. Retaining our workforce, it's been a challenge in the municipal sector over the past 10 years. We've been able to reduce our vacancy rates, though, and we're quite proud of the efforts that have been made. It's been a challenge particularly in healthcare, certainly a story you will hear from hospitals, long-term care, and so forth. But we've made some progress there. And like many things that you do here at the town, the district has to work with the community to succeed. Whether we're talking about charitable organizations and issues like homelessness or mental health, or childcare, we try and bring together the sector and our partners in the community and support them through programs like the Community Grant Program, which is now open at the district for 2025. One of our examples here is MailT, which you may be familiar with, the Muskoka Indigenous Leadership Table, which has actually won some awards. Full credit to my predecessor, former Chair Clink, former Mayor Clink, who set up this roundtable with our Indigenous leadership community. And we've been able to accomplish a number of projects together. It's really a great model for collaboration. All of this does cost something. And so, it would not be a proper report without at least reporting on our budget situation. There are six regional municipalities in Southern Ontario and one district in Northern Ontario that have the same bundle of services. The district includes in our budget policing, paramedics, social housing, water, wastewater, and so forth. We were able this year, with the tax increase of 4.4%, to be below the other six regional municipalities in Ontario. This is less about bragging about the tax increase and more about it's expensive. Because you look at some of these increases from regional municipalities like Waterloo and Niagara, which are, you know, hundreds of thousands of people and very large assessment basis, it is a significant challenge to keep up with the cost of human services these days. And of course, this is our two-tier local government system with areas of deliberate overlap where we collaborate. And making sure that we're collaborating and not overlapping is a constant effort that we do with town staff. And I think Julie Stephens, who's with me today, the district CAO, Scott, your own CAO, and the senior team from all of Muskoka's municipalities work together very closely to try and deliver better services for our residents. And just a couple of things here in Gravenhurst to close off that I wanted to mention. The, obviously, an investment in housing is at the top of most people's lists when it comes to issues affecting Muskoka. Of course, we, through the MayHip program, contributed to the Alexander to make 24 of their units more affordable. There's also six units for Habitat here in Gravenhurst that we funded last year through the MayHip program. You might be interested to know, there's 63 active rent subsidies in Gravenhurst helping people afford rent. We've been continuing to, as I say, pilot the DART service, the Community Responsive Transportation. You know well about the Bay and Beyond project, Houssies Rapids Depot, which we completed and opened last year. But, you know, I think in conclusion, the piece that I really wanted to highlight as we go through the next two years is, there've been a lot of plans and initiatives that have started. And now it is on all of us to sort of deliver them, whether that's completing Bay and Beyond and the pedestrian improvements and all the good things that will come with that project when it's done, expanding the paramedic service, but particularly our commitments to housing and childcare, which are so badly needed here in Gravenhurst and across the district. So, with that, I've probably taken more than my time, but it still says "welcome." So, again, thank you for having me here today and happy to answer any questions, your worship.
Thank you, Chair Lehman. We always appreciate hearing from the district. I will ask council, are there any questions for the chair? Councillor Morphy?
Thank you, your worship. Through you to Chair Lehman. The Brace Bridge, 44 units, affordable housing. Have you developed a model that, for to qualify? Because I know I'm going to get asked, right? Now that you've mentioned it. Have you come up with that yet, or is that still in the works?
There we go. So, we have a waitlist of many, many hundreds. Sad reality is that social housing waitlist exists across the province and here in Muskoka as well. So, that will be the priority. But people can always apply, and as opportunities become available, they will, they'll get their shot. To be frank, the need is much greater than 44 units. It's hundreds just on our waitlist. And that's not including all of the people in the community we know that are struggling to find a place. So, it's great progress, to be honest. It's much faster progress than we've made. It's the first new district social housing, new build, in over 20 years. But we need a lot more of those buildings, to be honest.
Council, any other questions?
I have one, actually, on that building. Are we sort of using that as a, sort of like a test model? Like, you know, 44 units in one space, like, and you learn something every time you do something? Can we see that we would just take this model and put it in other places? Because you always learn something the first time you do something, so.
100%. And thanks for that, your worship. So, a couple of things, I would say, yes, we would hope to replicate this or something very much like it. I think this template works very, very well, although it's not done yet. So, you know, once it's occupied and operational, we'll catch whether there are any significant issues with the additional floor. I mean, a lot of our models historically have been two and three stories. The evolution of this one was really interesting, right? Because it started at 18 units. That's all we were looking to do. Council asked, "Could we do more?" And then, interestingly enough, when we tendered the design, the contractor came back and said, "You know, you could add a fourth floor, and it would be very economic." And actually, the price for that came down under, it was close to $200,000 an additional unit to add the additional floor. So, really significant cost savings and a very attractive price. So, that tells us it's economic and it makes sense, right? So, we'll try that out, but the design and the construction method is ICF. Our contractor's moving very, very quickly. They do great work. And so, we're hopeful it's something we could do again.
Councillor Morphy?
Thank you. Through you to the chair. We have 100 vacant dorm rooms sitting out there at the OFC, and you are the district. You've got the housing file. Any consideration that you can share or not?
It's something we've chatted about. I've had the chance to speak with the mayor about, and we have had a couple of conversations with Ontario. Not a lot of development on that front to tell you about. I think they are aware that we're interested from a housing point of view. And yeah, it's frustrating in a way to see units that feel like they could be occupied very easily. I think there are, the way the province works is they circulate the surplus properties within the provincial family. And if somebody puts their hand up, then they don't go to the local municipalities. So, as I understand it, that's still kind of underway.
Okay. Council, are there any other questions? I mean, I think we could pick Geoff's brain, sorry, district chair's brain all day. But we, and I'm sure we'd be happy to field questions if you think of something afterwards. You can shoot an email, and I'm sure they would be happy to take them.
And since I'm here, I would certainly make that offer to councillors, town councillors here in Gravenhurst. I do hear from some of you from time to time. Please don't hesitate. Just email or call at any point. And thanks for the time on your agenda.
Well, thank you. Thanks for coming. We appreciate it. We're glad you like our digs, our new digs. Yeah. Okay. Next, I will invite our next deputation. Sandra Holsworth and Autumn Smith, Spark Muskoka. I would say that usually the district chair is a very tough act to follow, but you both have quite a bit of public speaking experience on your own, so.
It's not the first time I've had to follow Geoff.
I try and make it never to happen. Yeah. Well, welcome. Thanks very much.
Geoff, Mr. Lehman, he was a Mayor of Barry, and we used to do a lot of reasoning awareness about organ donation. So, my name is Sandra Holsworth. Most of you know me, some of you don't. I'm here with Autumn Smith. Some of you might know, and some of you won't. Don't? I'll do an introduction. I was like, wondering if we could have the first slide put up. And we're here to talk about Spark Muskoka. But before we can do that, I want to tell you a little bit about how it came together. But to do that, I want to talk about Ignite Gravenhurst. So, Ignite Gravenhurst was an idea from Jeremy Rand, who was in London at the time, and he attended Ignite London. He was then working in the town with Amy Taylor, who's at the back there. I'd like to acknowledge her as well. And when he was here, he said, "How can I bring this to Gravenhurst?" So, he connected with Amy in 2017. They had their first Ignite on the Thursday night before the Gravenhurst Winter Carnival. And I happened to be a guest speaker in there. I had five minutes to speak about organ and tissue donation. Imagine how that went over. And it was really good. So, Ignite Gravenhurst went on to have seven events with over 135 speakers, which we'll get to. But what happened, everyone's evolving, we're rebranding and trying to look at different ways of doing things. And I had a talk with Shauna Patterson and the person at the time, I think it was Nicole, Jennifer, about what we can do because we weren't getting as much attendance during the carnival. We wouldn't get support because they had the winter carnival, plus following that, coldest night of the year, which Autumn and I both support greatly. And so, we thought, "How can we do things?" And so, I had a good chat with Shauna and Nicole. And we set about, you know, doing things more, like, not the whole five-minute format, having longer time to speak, not necessarily all the community partners, community agencies, because we really showcase them a lot. And so, I started thinking, "Okay, well, we need to do something. How are we going to do this?" So, Autumn Smith, who I've known because I got to see a lot of her productions, she owns, is the owner, she's, I guess, the head producer of Timberbee's Productions. If you've never seen any of their productions, you got to get out and see one. I've seen probably about six, and they're amazing. And so, I had the idea, "Well, let's contact, I'm going to contact Autumn and see what she thinks about this." And that's how it worked, from her and I having a conversation with Jeremy. Sandy was with Ignite. Sandy Kirns was with Ignite at the time. Not as a representative of Gravenhurst, just as an interested party, who actually was able to connect with a lot of speakers. And then we became Spark Muskoka. So, we're not, we like to become a nonprofit that's registered. But right now, we just have myself and Autumn and Sarah. have myself and Autumn and Sarah, Sarah and Autumn from Timberbees, and then Jeremy, Sandy, Sandy Cairns and myself from Ignite Gravenhurst. But we are going to be looking for more people to join our, what we would call our working committee. But also one thing before we go on to do our presentation really quickly, I just want to thank the town and the Gravenhurst Carnival for how they helped us be successful for seven years. And I also want to recognize that two councillors, I believe spoke, Penny Varney spoke on an interesting trip in a van. And Christina Hunter was always there to talk about the environment and get us connections with that. And most of you have attended and so we thank you for that. So let's go over from that. I'm going to pass it on to Autumn and she'll take over from here.
Amazing, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we can actually skip a couple of slides because Sandra was so articulate in explaining what Ignite was and where we're at today. So without further ado, big news. That's where we're at. Big news. Okay, that's the background. There's Amy. This is us. Ignite, the awesome that was. And now we're moving into the big news. So Ignite Gravenhurst is evolving. We are excited to announce that Ignite Gravenhurst has kindled a new working partnership with Timberbees Productions for a rebrand that will set the minds and hearts of all of Muskoka ablaze. Introducing Spark Muskoka. So this is a new talk and performance series based on the stories of this place we collectively call home. Spark Muskoka is dedicated to honoring us, our work, our history, our experience, our awesome. This new format will allow us to engage deeper bonds to the world around us while it's connecting with our community on a more frequent basis. So Spark Muskoka, our next step is our official launch. And that is going to happen on April the 27th. You are all invited at 2:00 PM and we are going to dive into the wonderful history of our most famed building, the Gravenhurst Opera House. Although with this table, this new table, you're giving it a serious run, so just saying. So this is going to be an afternoon in three parts. We are going to share the history of the Opera House. Judy Humphries, our wonderful archivist for the town, is going to do a retrospective on the building and some of the performances that have taken place there. Then Timberbees Productions, we are going to do a version of Ben and the Ghostlight. It is a piece that was originally debuted in our Souls of the Shield trilogy and is all about the history of the Opera House and the working class people that brought it to fruition and the ghost that now calls it home, Ben. And it's a perfect segue because the last part of this day is going to feature Keeping Up with Spirits in Search of the Opera House Ghost. So we have a paranormal investigator coming and sharing a little bit about their world. Our first event is a pay what you can, so people can come, drop some coins in a bucket or bills, we like bills, bills are great. And we are going to use this as a catalyst to get the word out there and to share a little bit of the awesome that is situated in this fabulous house. Up next, what's next for Spark Muskoka? We are going to, in 2025, do a two, a second Spark event in October or November featuring women and the war effort. So we're going to talk all about the women who were on the home front, keeping the home fires burning. So that will take place in either October or November, depending on location and availability. But we have a phenomenal human being that I've been in touch with who talks all about the farmarettes and their contribution to the effort through the farming industry. I have another friend that is, whose mom was one of the baseball players, the female baseball players in Ontario. So that will be another part of the narrative. So it's going to be a really exciting event and we're hoping to give part of the proceeds back to our legion because we know that they are in need of that. So part of this is also giving back to our community. Other things for the future, blank slate. We're open to possibility, obviously. We are thinking about doing a lived experience library, gathering stories from our elders and sharing those and bringing in youth and ecology and environment conversations. So those are a couple of things we are working on currently. In 2026, we are going to expand into doing four of these a year. So it's going to become more frequent and more in-depth. And we just want to share this information with you today so we can continue to work together. Our hope is to unsilo ourselves as a district and start to do this across all three towns and beyond. Possibilities are infinite and endless and all great things. So that's it. That's where we're at. This is a new beginning and we're really excited to share it with you. This is where we start and this is where we're always going to come back to because this is our home base. Thank you for having us today. Any questions? Should I ask any questions? Oh, Sandra's going to add something.
So the paranormal person is Sarah from, oh my God.
Keeping up with spirits.
Thank you, Keeping Up with Spirits. Thank you. That's why you're here, right? And then I also wanted to acknowledge that the Opera House has been donated to us and so we're doing that and giving, you know, so, but as I said, we're a nonprofit and going forward, we will be able to then apply for sponsorship and people like that. So we're going to grow, so we're, you know, just like any other group. So as Autumn said, any questions?
Okay, thank you for your presentation. I'm going to clarify, we probably are a working partner rather than saying donate because we like to be very clear that we're a partner in this and so we have, sometimes people come and they want us to donate space all the time, but this is a working partnership. So just to clarify that, thank you. But awesome, really looking forward to it. I will ask, Counsel, are there any questions? I think we've all had the opportunity to either be at Ignite or at one of Timberbees Productions and we're very lucky to have these two women championing for arts in our community. So thank you for that. Counsel Varney, looks like you, yep, go ahead.
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. So my question is, it's not just the two of you, you must have other people helping. Yes, I'd love to put my name forward to you as well.
Done.
That's what we're looking for. And I also like to acknowledge Mayor Lorenz and CAO Scott Lucas for saying that you're going to be a partner. That is so great to hear and I'm just getting chills from hearing that, so that's great. Because we started together and we should grow together, right? And hopefully we can get the same, Mr. Lehman from Huntsville and Bracebridge, which we'll contact with them because as you said, it's Muskoka. So thank you.
Well, I'm going to thank Shawna Patterson for working with the, and Kelly at the Opera House for, you know.
Yeah, Kelly and Martin and.
Yeah, and the team at the Opera House. So, you know, when the Opera House is humming, we love to see it. Great, okay.
Can I just take one second? Well, you're here and Scott and Mr. Lehman are here. I just wanted to say thank you for everything that the town did during the storm. I'd like to thank, I had reached out to Heidi and she reached out to Scott and I reached out to my friend Sandy Cairns. And I got the best service I needed when I had a very health-related emergency and actually I probably, you know, it saved my life, so let's just say that. So thank you for all you do. And yeah, so I just want, while I'm here, I couldn't come to the thing because I was doing dialysis, but I just want to acknowledge everyone in the room for their involvement. Now it's going to be the flooding part we have to deal with.
Oh, well, thank you very much for saying that and I'm glad, like I, like we chatted, I'm glad it ended, I'm glad it ended the way that it did because when I was talking with you, I think, you know, we understood the severity of the situation, so. And I hope you submitted, like I said, to your story to Janet and Gord because it was quite a situation that you went through. So thank you very much for sharing that and glad that it worked out for you. Thank goodness, so glad you're here to tell the tale, so. Okay, thanks again. So Counsel, we are now going to move on to our consent agenda. And with that, I have a number of items here. Is moved by Counsel Jorgensen and second by Counselor Strength. Be it resolved, the following consent items be, agenda items be approved. Correspondence from AMO RE Communities Brace for Tariff Impact. Minutes from Gravenhurst Trails Committee, November 14th, 2024. Minutes from the Gravenhurst Public Library, January 9th, 2025. Minutes Accessibility Advisory Committee, January 16th, 2025. Minutes Municipal Heritage Committee, February 18th, 2025. Report update to Municipal Register of Heritage Properties. Report award Fairview Drive Storm Sewer Improvements and Road Rehabilitation. Does anybody want to pull any of these, Counsel? Counsel Morphy?
Yes, number one, please.
So we'll address that at new business. Anybody else? Okay. Oh, I forgot Counselor Strength is online, but make sure that you just turn, give us a wave if you.
She's got a request to speak.
Oh, okay, great. So with that, I'll call the vote. And that carries, thank you. So we will roll right into new business. So it is moved by Counselor Morphy, second by Counselor Robinson. Be it resolved that report number FIN 2025-03, RE 2024 Annual Investment be received for information. Mr. Campbell, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm very happy to present today's 2024 Investment Report Summary. So the purpose of this report is really to provide an update on the town's investment portfolio for 2024 and its performance for 2024. So just to give you some high-level updates, so in 2024, the town's investment portfolio generated a total investment income of $2.2 million with an annualized return of 7.81%. Compared to 2023, our investment portfolio grew by 775,000, which represented us 53.7% year-over-year growth. The main factors which contributed to the year-over-year growth were high interest rates in 2024 resulting in higher returns from the high-interest savings accounts and guaranteed investment certificates. And there's also strong performance of our equity investments, including the One Investment Program. But in terms of performance, our investments have yielded the following returns. I'll just go through the different investment portfolios. So on our endowment, we yielded 9.63%. That was an increase of 4.53% over prior year due to strong equity market performance and high interest rates. On our cemetery trust, our investment, we, there was a 5.09, there was no change compared to prior year and that was due to stable interest rates and conservative investment strategy. For the obligatory reserve funds, we yielded a return of 5.65% and that's an increase of 0.88% due to higher interest rates and improved investment returns. For cash reserves and reserve funds, there was a yield of 8.16 for 2024 compared to 5.05 in 2023 and that increase of 3.1 was due primarily to high interest rates and strong equity market performance and effective cash flow management. So overall, we are pleased with the performance of our investment portfolio and we'll continue to monitor and adjust our strategies in alignment with our investment policies. And of course, for 2025, we do anticipate our investment portfolio continuing to grow. However, we're very mindful of the potential implications of the market, the market volatility and changing interest rates. So we're monitoring that with our consultants and of course, we'll adjust where needed as necessary based on how the market operates in 2025. All right, so that's it for my updates. Any questions, if you have any?
Okay, Counsel, are there any questions? Counsel Morphy?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. I think I'm making up for Randy this month. Okay, like 2024 was a year like no other in terms of rate of returns and it won't probably happen again for a while. What jumped out at me, page 49, under conclusions, it says, Administration concludes that all investments were made in accordance with the investment policy and goals adopted by the town. My question is, I don't remember going over this, would it be your opinion that maybe we should revisit our investment policies and goals or are you happy with the way they are?
Well, as the need arises, we do revisit the, revisit the investment policy based on how the market is operating and so on. So annually, we will look at our market performance and if the need arises, we'll go back through and make adjustments where necessary. So we do, do monetary updates as we go along.
Okay, are there any other questions for the treasurer? I'll just say, I imagine, I imagine some of the volatility out in the world right now will affect this going forward for this year so far. I'm sure these numbers look very different, well, I wouldn't say very different, but certainly different today than they did at the end of the year. So are we planning on making any changes based on that or are we just?
What we do.
Like stick it up, stick it out, like, you know, ride the wave?
All right, so we continue to monitor market conditions, I mean, in collaboration with our consultants, they will advise us accordingly, so we will make adjustments based on how the market is going. So if there's a need to adjust our strategy based on the market conditions, we will, of course, address those accordingly and ensure it was aligned with our financial goals and objectives going forward.
Well, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, so I will call the question on receiving the report. And that carries, thank you. Okay, oh, still we're sticking with our treasurer here, Emergency Funding Report. So I'm going to read this, it's a bit lengthy. We just did talk about this with the clerk the other day and see, but we will, she prefers for it to be read aloud, so we will be reading a couple long ones today. And actually, our CAO said, well, the chair doesn't have to read them all, so you're stuck with this process for a while. So it's moved by Counselor Strength, who is online, second by Counselor Varney. Whereas the town of Gravenhurst experienced a long-duration, significant winter storm event in November and December 2024, whereas in accordance with the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act 1990, the mayor for the town of Gravenhurst declared an emergency on Sunday, December 1st, 2024, whereas the emergency declaration was ended on December 16th, 2024. And whereas through responding to the emergency declaration, the town experienced incremental operating and capital costs. Therefore, be it resolved that report number FIN 2025-04, RE Emergency Funding Report and the subsequent claims package be received and that Counsel for the town of Gravenhurst hereby requests the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing activate the Municipal Disaster Recovery Assistance Program. And finally, that the Director of Financial Services, Treasurer, in consultation with the Chief Administration Officer for Town of Gravenhurst be provided delegated authority to verify and attest to the accuracy of this attached claim. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. So before I begin to provide any updates on this report, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge a few persons who have really been, who have provided valuable contributions to helping to make this report possible. Specifically, I'd like to highlight the outstanding effort of our manager of accounting, Manager Trot, who was quite diligent and efficient in navigating the complexities of the complexities of this claim file. It was quite a huge undertaking, there were many, several moving parts to it, but she, I mean. many, several moving parts to it, but she, I mean, she was quite diligent, she was quite, she did it effortlessly, and I just want to really say thanks to her. She, you know, she was quite instrumental in ensuring accuracy and the completeness of our file. I'd also like to express gratitude to the, to our director, Stacy, and his team, who provided invaluable support to us. They gave us information that, that were quite insightful in getting the claims package together. Also, to other members of the senior management team, I'd like to express thanks to them, because without those persons, we couldn't have compiled the report together. So we really, we're really appreciative of that. Now, to give you a quick, quick overview of the report, so the town incurred nine eighty-three, nine eighty-three thousand seven twenty-one in costs related to emergency response and recovery, recovery efforts. We intend to submit the application tomorrow, if everything, if all goes well, along with the signed resolution. Because there's a cost and breakdown between the, the province and the municipality. So the cost and breakdown with the province is anticipated to be approximately eight twenty-four thousand four fifty-nine in provincial funding, covering eighty-three point eight one percent of eligible cost, and one fifty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-two in municipal funding, covering the remaining sixteen point nine one percent. Now, while we believe that our, that our situation meets the criteria, we are, however mindful that the formal confirmation of eligibility will be determined upon review of the application by the ministry. So we await further update from them. So we intend to submit tomorrow, and we'll keep, we'll keep you, keep, keep you all updated with the progress. But thanks again. It was quite a huge undertaking, but we're happy that everyone was on board, and we got it all together, and we're thankful for that. So the next leg noise, the final leg is to submit it tomorrow, all being well. So we look forward to that.
Well, thank you. And for those who don't know, this was, I think, your first month with us. I think this was, you know, not exactly what you were expecting when you came to Gravenhurst. So we appreciate you staying and sticking it through, because we don't want to see another beginning of December like that either. But I appreciate all of staff's work that went into this. I mean, you guys do a ton of work every day. We know how hard and how lean these departments are, so to have this added work added onto your workload is, is very significant. And we thank you for doing this in such a timely, effective manner. And we've all got everything crossed and make sure that we see this money, we see this money back, you know, paid, you know, paid forward from the province. So thanks again to, to your team and to the infrastructure team and, and to everybody who, I mean, obviously not a time that I reflect back on in fondness, except for the good things that happened. And I think some of the good things are, is how everybody pulled together. So this is no different. So, council, are there any questions for the director? Councillor Hunter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you. Would there be any reason it would be denied?
Well, again, when I, when I last spoke with the ministry, they indicated that we should still go ahead and submit the application. They can't definitively say now if it will be approved. Upon, upon receiving the application, they said they'll, they'll confirm at that point if we are eligible. So we're mindful of the, of the possibility of, of not, of it being denied and so on. So we have, we have something in place just to, to, I mean, to counteract those, I mean, potential denials.
Thank you.
So there's a plan B, is what you're saying. Okay, too bad we have to have that, but it's a good thing we do. So anybody else have any questions on this subject? Okay, then I'll call the question to receive the, or to submit the report. Thank you. Please And that carries. Thank you. Okay, council, so I think we'll go through the Municipal Heritage Committee Plan, Work Plan. And then, because we have been at it since two thirty, I will call about a ten-minute break after we get through that, because I think the Climate Change Adaptation Implementation Plan could be lengthy. So why don't we go through and councillor Jorgensen, I don't know if you're prepared to speak to it, but I will just read the report, the motion moved by councillor Jorgensen, second by councillor Morphy. Be it resolved that report number DEV twenty twenty-four twelve, RE Municipal Heritage Committee twenty twenty-five work plan be received for information, and that committee approve the Municipal Heritage Committee twenty twenty-five work plan. So, Madam Clerk, I think we talked about councillor Jorgensen would take this. So councillor Jorgensen?
Thank you, your worship. I, I think for the most part, there's, there's not a lot of change here, that, that people should be familiar with what the Heritage Committee has been working on. One of the, the issues that came forward, and it's related to an item earlier in the agenda, was the municipal register of properties and designating properties, and the difficulties we've run into with people now wanting to designate their properties under the, the act. So one thing that, that change that you'll see in particular is we have changed, we had a Properties of Interest Working Group, and we're changing the name of that to the Heritage Recognition Working Group. So we're going to do it on a more, we, we see us doing it on a more informal basis rather than strictly under the act. The problem with that, of course, is that, you know, when a property is designated, there's, there is certain protection provided under the act. Most recently, we've seen people wanting, coming forward to us and actually asking to have their property's designation removed, as we're, we're all familiar with. So it's created, you know, the whole insurance situation, whatnot, has created a bit of a chill in the designation, official designation process. So we're looking at other ways. We're still planning to move forward with placking and recognizing properties. The municipal register will still stay in effect. There was concern in the past, or recently, about that the properties on the register would have two years before they had to be removed, either designate it or remove it. And that has been extended, I think, for five years, if I'm not mistaken. But the other thing we're doing is, another item you'll see on here is we're working with the Architectural Conservancy, Conservancy, Architectural Conservancy of Ontario. And they have a, a website that we are able to participate with and, you know, put up properties. So kind of have, have a visual representation of the property, and this is something they're doing throughout Muskoka. The Muskoka chapter is doing this. So we will be working with the ACO Muskoka branch to include our register information. And we have formalized as well, you'll see in the, in the work plan, a couple other items. Our signage group, we have a working group that's going to be looking at things like we've done before. For example, the most recent being the Camp Callidore Trail, for example, where we put up a number of signs, working with, with the town to do that, to highlight the, the features along, in that property. So that type of thing, looking at recognizing individuals, recognizing families, recognizing other heritage features throughout the town. And that'll be, that, that's another working group that we have going. And we also, at our last meeting, decided that we will be hoping to participate in the twenty twenty-five Doors Open program, which is a program of the provincial government to, and not just heritage buildings necessarily, but to basically invite the public into buildings that they may not get into on a regular basis. So there's heritage buildings, but it could be, you know, other, other buildings, you know, like the town hall potentially, come on and see what's in here. That's what Doors Open is all about, kind of inviting the community into, into a variety of, of buildings. So I think I'll leave it there. I'll take a cue from our CAO, and I think I'll leave it at that. And invite any questions you might have.
Okay. Councillor Varney, you have some questions, or a question?
Yes, thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. I'm just wondering, councillor Jorgensen, if you know the date of Doors Open? Is it a winter, summer, fall event? Thank you.
It is in September, I believe. I, I could look up the exact date, but I can get that to you. And I know that Arts of the Albion has participated in the past in Doors Open, things like that. So we will be, we have to come up with at least ten properties, or ten buildings, if you will, I guess. And it doesn't have to be a building. It can be, you know, it can be some other feature as well. And the goal there with Doors Open is to have somebody on site, you know, to act as an interpreter for people and that type of thing. So it is, it's in September. So we feel we've got, you know, a pretty good time to get going on it.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay, well, thank you for that, for updating us. And the chair was unable to join us today. So thanks to her and the committee for your, your service. We appreciate the volunteers. I would, I'm thanking you like I would thank her, but we appreciate the volunteers who, who, you know, sit on these committees. We really appreciate the work they do, so. Okay, well, with that, I'm going to call the question. Please vote. All right, and that carries. Thank you. And I'm going to say it's four oh one. I'm going to say let's be back here at four ten. So that's nine minutes from now. Give or take a few seconds. Okay, welcome back, everyone. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. Thank you. So we are moving right along. It is moved by Counselor Karen, second by Counselor Hunter. Be resolved that report number DV 202513 RE Climate Change Adaptation Implementation Plan be received as supplemental background information to the Regional Climate Change Adaptation Plan recap that council endorsed in principle on January 17, 2023, and that the implementation plan be used to guide future climate change adaptation activities. We are going to go to Director Halford. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. So I think the report is pretty straightforward and I won't go through it too much other than this was another opportunity for the area municipalities to work together and prioritize the over 160 projects that were outlined in the recap document so that we could create an achievable schedule for their implementation and to identify which projects are the most important and will have the most bang for our buck, so to speak. So really, I think the report speaks for itself. I would highlight the fact that, as we've talked about recently, through the Service Delivery Review component, there is no dedicated, at this point, financial or staffing resources assigned to this, the climate change portfolio at this time and that both myself and, to a certain extent, Director Stacy have been, you know, pulling together certain components of the climate change action that's been conducted so far. But moving forward in order for us to take impactful steps to implementing these important documents, there will be a need to, to resource that. Happy to answer any questions that there may be.
Okay. Counselor Hunter, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I had a question for Director Halford. So in January of 2023, we approved the recap plan. In January of this year, we endorsed the Corporate Greenhouse Gas Inventory and Regional Climate Change Mitigation Plan. My question is, can you just explain, do they work together? Is there, is there work being, like overlapping each other and sort of how both of them come together?
Thank you very much, Your Worship, through you to the counselor. So there are two main components to climate change action plans. One is climate change mitigation and climate change, and the second is climate change adaptation. So the first stage that we conducted was the climate change adaptation, which is the recap, the Regional Climate Adaptation Plan. And it's more focused on not just our activities here, but the community's activities and programs that we conduct outside of the organization. The Corporate Greenhouse Gas Emission Inventory and Mitigation Plan, it just rolls off the tongue, is what we look at in terms of what our corporate, corporate greenhouse gas emissions are currently and how can we reduce that to meet our greenhouse gas emission targets, which were set by the Declaration of the Climate Emergency for a 50% reduction or close there to by 2030 and then a full net zero by 2050. So combined, they create our climate action plan, but there's two separate components. One is our in-house greenhouse gas emission reduction, and then the other is more engagement with the community and, and projects that we will be conducting that are, involve the community.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Counselor Jorgensen.
Thank you, Your Worship. Specifically on, on this plan, this, I'm looking at the bucket one, Adaptation Actions List, all area municipalities. Is, is the idea that each municipality will work on these independently? Or is this something that, again, as a group, the municipalities work together to develop some of these?
Director Halford?
Thank you very much, Your Worship, through to, through you to Counselor Jorgensen. No, these are initiatives that we all have to do, so it makes sense for us to work together. On the first one, for example, the Flood Plane Mapping Policy Work, for example, there was just a recent area planners' meeting where we all, all the area municipal planning divisions, as well as the district, kind of talked about how we can kick this project off with the new mapping that's been provided through the provincial government, providing the funding to the district to update the air photos and the Flood Plane Mapping. So how can we work together so that our policies are close to, as close as possible to each other and we can work together? So there, some of them will be looking in our own house at certain things, but, and we'll all be doing them at the same time, but there are things that we can work together on. So it'll be a mix of both.
Is it supplemental? Go ahead.
Thank you. So supplemental to that. Item number five, the Develop Policies Encourage Incorporation of Low-Impact Development Features and Green Infrastructure into New Development and Redevelopment Projects. Obviously, that's something that, to me, that, you know, we want to have, try and have consistency around, you know, throughout the district on. But do you see that, I mean, certain municipalities require those things right now. Do you see us moving into that kind of realm? Or would it be just to encourage this type of, identify and encourage this type of item in, in a development feature? Because, as I say, you know, it, it makes a difference in terms of competitiveness between municipalities, the ones that require certain features versus ones that don't. I mean, it's, it makes it, you know, from a development point of view, some people may consider it more difficult to build in an area that has requirements than, than one that doesn't. Just wondering about your thoughts on that.
Director?
Thank you very much, Your Worship, through you to the counselor. I think that these types of development features are going to be the norm going forward. And we've all worked on these types, we all have this as a action in our adaptation plan. And it makes financial sense to do it over the long term because if you're able, if you're better able to retain stormwater on your own property, then you're going to have less risk to your, your infrastructure and your buildings that you've got on site. So I think that the district is also working on, for their, their level of development, so subdivisions, that kind of thing, some design guidelines for them as well when they're reviewing development applications. And we have, we currently use, the, Mr. Stacy has explained this to me. We currently use the requirements that were developed by the district as well. So we are consistent with what's required around the area. So I would say that going forward, it's just going to be a matter of business that you are going to have to, to implement those types of development techniques to, on your party because that's just the way the world, of the world. Understanding how we can enforce it, though, is what we need to get to and making sure that we get buy-in from, from developers. And I think the main piece is educating and showing people, these are the storms we're having. These are the amount of rain that we're having. These are all the snow. We actually, we have lived experience in recent history that we can now tell people, and we're all going to be traumatized, I think, from snow for a while. So we can talk about this knowledgeably. And, and then I think it, it's about telling that story and getting buy-in. So I'm, I'm hoping that that will be the way it is. But the short answer is, I think everyone, we are all going to be working on this together. We've all made a commitment. Everyone's declared a climate emergency, and these are all in our plans and all of the councils have, have committed to. So my hope is that we're all going to be on the same playing field.
Counselor Karen?
You and through you. I just, a couple of questions in regards to some of the programs that we can do and through the municipality. And I know we became a B city, which is really an excellent thing because then we bring in pollinator gardens, which then will help with lots of things. But I just wondered about, you know, are we going to be bringing forward rain barrels again and the programs for people to collect the rain barrel water? Also composting, I noticed that I do vermiculture with red wiggler worms, but I noticed that Bracebridge has just brought that on board as well. So I'm wondering how we can implement these programs and when would be able to do that? As well as the rain barrels and compost again, like, you know, outside composting. Not everyone can compost due to the, the nature that we have in this area, but a lot of us can. And I think it's really important to, you know, I don't think I've put out my green bin in a couple of years because everything that I have, I use in my garden. So I'm just wondering when we can start to implement these programs and when, I know I've gotten some notices from the B city, so I'm just wondering how that comes. I know that's on page 19 and, or 18 of the report, and there's other notices of it as well.
Director?
Yeah, through you, Your Worship, to the counselor. The, it's, the, there's twofold. There's policies that encourage that, and then there's actually conducting the work. So, and, and having the rebate programs and that. So it's in the plan that that's part of what we can be doing to adapt to the impacts of climate change is having rain barrels and, and it will help us as well. It's, it's a mitigation effort as well. So in terms of when, we're working through, we have now a, a work plan for, or a prioritization, sorry, of the most impactful initiatives. And once we're able to resource and come up with a, a full plan based on this, then we can give you some more concrete timelines on that. But I don't have one currently, can't tell you that in two months we'll be doing that. We, what I've done for this year is, in the work plan for the year, was identify some of the initiatives that we can work on that have, are no cost to the municipality and that we were, that kind of correlate with other initiatives that we've got going on. And then for 2026 is where I'm hoping that we can really hit the ground running with some of these larger resource-dependent projects. Like, for example, rain barrel program and that type of thing.
Counselor Karen's?
And I, I, thank you, through you. I just wondered too, or just, I'm sure you're aware of the fact that the district's putting on a new program that'll be coming out during clean, I call it clean sweep, but it's in April, they're going to be announcing their new program that's going to be quite similar to what we have now in Gravenhurst, the Daisy Awards. But this is to recognize people with bronze, silver, and gold. There's more to come. I'm going to be hopefully championing that with the district as much as I can to bring it forward to this municipality. And hopefully, we can, you know, mix it in with the Communities in Bloom program and make it even better than it already is. And recognizing more of what people are doing in our community to cut back on waste, to recycle, to do everything else. Because, I mean, we all know that garbage is a huge concern for everyone in all the municipalities. So I just want, just wanted to know if you knew about the program that's coming up? And I don't know the exact name of it, but it, it sounds quite interesting and, and it should help out all the municipalities as well.
Okay. Well, more on garbage tomorrow morning at EPW, which is, Solid Waste Plan is going to be on Master Plan. It's going to be unrolled, I believe, tomorrow. So stay tuned for that. And as you know, the big push is on for composting through the, the district with the clear garbage bags, and that is in direct response to people not composting. And I'm not sure if you've been following the, the district online. They diverted 80 or 80, some, like incredible amount of tons. I think it's 80 tons or maybe even 800. I should have had the facts in front of me, but of compost or organics out of the garbage in just two weeks. Significant difference. And we know that organics is what causes, what does it cause? What's the gas? Methane, yes. So really important to make sure that, you know, you are composting. And unfortunately, it was the push to, to clear bags that have got people doing what I think is the right thing. So anybody else have anything to add? No? Okay. So with that, council, I'll ask to vote on adapting. And while, while I am voting, I will also say thank you to staff. I think it's really, it's really great to see the, I will say jobs because sometimes it's easy to say what it is we're going to do, but to see it all laid out for us and we can easily point to it and say, this is what we're doing and this is when you, you know, I mean, not exactly when we can expect to do it, but I think it's a really great document to have. And so thank you to our staff and to the district-wide participation. I think it's fantastic. So that did carry. Thank you. Okay, here's another long one. I promised you another long one, and here, here it comes. So it is moved by Counselor Jorgensen, second by Counselor Robinson. Be resolved that report number RAC 202502 RE Third-Party Event Administration be received for information and that committee designates the following events as municipally significant events for the town of Gravenhurst. Tall Pines Music Festival, Muskoka Rib Fest and In-Water Boat and Cottage Show, Dockside Festival of the Arts, the Amazing Grays Tournament, Gravenhurst Summer Curling Bonspiel, Gravenhurst Winter Carnival, On the Pond North American Cup 2020, 2026. I didn't think I needed them, but I do. My reach isn't far enough when it, they're all jumbled together. I can read the small ones, but. And that in exemption to bylaw number 202362 being a bylaw to regulate certain noises within the town of Gravenhurst be approved for the above municipally significant events as well as any event that holds a valid event permit issued by the town of Gravenhurst. And that in exemption to the bylaw number 2023 being a bylaw to regulate the erection of signs and other advertising devices within the town of Gravenhurst be approved for these municipally significant events as well as any event that holds a valid event permit issued by the town of Gravenhurst subject to the discretion of the Review of Development Services. And that in exemption, bylaw number 2012149 being a bylaw to prohibit smoking outdoors on property owned by the town of Gravenhurst, smoke-free outdoor spaces, be approved for the Tall Pines Music and Art Festival and Dockside Festival of the Arts to permit a safe cannabis consumption zone during their event. And that in exemption to bylaw number 198790 being a bylaw to establish certain rules and regulations regarding the parking, maintenance, operation, and management of the town's parks, Part 1, Section 2, Subsection F, Camper Lodge in a Town Park, be approved for Torx Registration Event Participants and Tall Pines Music and Arts Festival Volunteer Staff as both events will have onsite security or security on site. And that in exemption to bylaw number 20200651, Section 14, Subsection 12 being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Gravenhurst to regulate the use of Muskoka Wharf be approved for the coldest night of the year for the use of fire pits. And finally, that, finally, and that in exemption to bylaw number 2012135 being a bylaw to regulate outdoor illumination to ensure responsible lighting, light pollution mitigation and conservation of the dark sky environment be approved for Tall Pines Music and Arts Festival and Rib Fest and In-Water Boat and Cottage Show. So I'm going to go over to council, sorry, to Director Patterson. Please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was a mouthful for you. So this is a routine report that comes forward every year. However, I want to highlight a few things extra this year as we've become more consistent with bylaw enforcement with events over the years and making sure we're bringing everything forward that we should be, which is why. we're bringing everything forward that we should be, which is why our introduction was so long. So the first thing I want to highlight is the sign, the sign bylaw regulation. So this will be a partnership working with Development Services and bylaw to come up with a procedure for all of our events who get permits for their operation. There will be restrictions to how many signs, et cetera, that they can put up. So we are going to work on what that procedure looks like going forward for all of the events that have a permit, whether they're Coldest Night of the Year or Rib Fest or Tall Pines. They will have specific areas likely that they can put their signs up, so it's not over overkill in the community, so to speak. The second one I want to highlight is the bylaw to prohibit smoking in outdoor properties. There is an addition this year for another safe cannabis zone. It was really successful last year with Tall Pines. It worked well and we have Dockside Festival of the Arts coming back and they have requested the same area. So we'll be working with them and the health unit to make sure that their zone is is done properly in accordance with all the rules and regulations like Tall Pines was. Additionally, the exemption for camping in the park. Tall Pines has requested that again for their security. It went well last year. There were no complaints. And they were able to keep their staff on site, which worked well. Torx is also asking for the same thing for their two-day event at Gull Lake to have the one night for camping. So they will be doing the same type of thing with their security as well as some of their registered participants who want to stay with their with their boats. It was noted that the exemption for the wharf for the fire pits for Coldest Night of the Year is in there, as as was brought up last last council meeting. So that is also included. So those are those are any new ones that haven't really historically been included in part of this report and just done at our events meeting in-house. So we're bringing those forward for proper approval this year. Formal approval, not proper. Some other things I want to make note of, we will continue to do the letter to all impacted stakeholders in the areas of Gull Lake and the Wharf for any events that are occurring with ones that include beach closures for swimming because they're using the waterfront, as well as dates for all of our events that have noise impacts. So everything will be distributed as we've done in years past. So that will maintain. The other big component to this report is the waste diversion for events. Holly Carney, who is here today, she has been doing a lot of work digging into what waste diversion could look like. We are having some issues as there is currently no commercial compost programs available, so we're having a hard time finding ways to divert compost and recycling so that the events aren't trucking it themselves to where they need to take it to a transfer station. So we're still working on ways to make that happen and other ways we can help reduce waste that comes to events by changing the containers that they're using, encouraging not having disposable things there that aren't recyclable or compostable. More to come on that. We will be bringing a report forward to the April meeting with a bigger update on the waste diversion. Hopefully, I'm hoping in April, if we have all the pieces in place. If not, it might be the May meeting, depending on how conversations go with the partners that we're trying to work with for waste diversion. So more to come on that. And all the other things are are similar to last year. Traffic control plans are in place for any closures. We have communicated with the events and will continue to do so, as well as with the district for Bay and Beyond impacts, if there are any for either location. And I think I'm going to leave it there. I think all of the requests for exemptions sum up the bigger pieces that are in this report. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, I'm going to go to councillor Cairns first.
Thank you, worship and through you. I just had a question and and I know this is for third-party events, but I think we've spoke before about the the smoking in the park. And this is just cigarette smoking that happens a lot of times during Music on the Barge or they're just at the beach. And I know that it is supposed to be handled, I believe, through the health unit. And I'm wondering if and when we can get signs up because when I'm sitting there enjoying the Music on the Barge, I get a lot of people coming to me and saying, you know, they're smoking in the park. What what, you know, you got to go over and tell them to stop because they're not allowed. And there is no signage in the park for no smoking. And if we have certain designated areas, that's fine, but I'm just saying or asking if it's possible that we get the no smoking signs put up this year before the events start, just so that, you know, we can at least point to that sign and say it does say no smoking. It is on our, I believe, on the entrance sign, but that's the only place it is. It's not in the park. It's not right by the barge. It's not on any structures like the little gazebo or the information booth, things like that. I think that the more we have as a backup to say, you know, you can't smoke because you really get beat up by people if they end up smoking and you go to them and say something and they they get a little bit upset because it says there's it doesn't say anything. And then you refer them to the outside sign as you're entering. Well, they don't come in that way. They come in a different entrance. So anyways, I just wondered along with some of the other third-party events that we have that don't allow smoking because our parks, all our parks, I believe, are designated as non-smoking. And I really think that it's important that we get those signs up to encourage and to be able to monitor it the best that we can. I know I don't know if we can assign bylaw to that at some point in time. I'd like to get some information on that if that's possible.
So I think we're wading into a completely other topic. I do appreciate that we all understand that the smoking can be a problem at our parks. But now we're wading into whether or not we're going to have bylaw at Music on the Barge. So I with with I just want to sort of cut that off and and because it's not really relevant to this of this subject here. So thank you for that. I think staff heard you loud and clear. And I would I would say that most people who are smoking at a crowded public park don't really care if it's signed. You know, they're they're inconsiderate to think that that what they're doing is not bothering the people around them. So councillor Hunter, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I am just wondering why Coldest Night of the Year isn't listed because we talk about it a couple of times, or unless I'm missing something. But they're not one of the seven.
I had the same question. Director Patterson will explain it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to councillor Hunter. So the seven that are listed as municipally significant events, it's specifically for an AGCO license. So we have to have a letter of municipally significant a letter designated, the clerk does it, and then we attach the resolution with that shows we've designated these events so that they can apply for their alcohol permit for their event. So it isolates just those ones for that reason. It doesn't list all of our events, which is why we kind of say any other events that have an approved permit through the town, which goes through our event process. So these seven specific are just for for alcohol licensing.
So Coldest Night of the Year is covered under that. When they get their permit, they'll be allowed signs. Strategically placed signs. Okay, over to councillor Morphy.
Thank you, worship through you. I think that might have just answered it, but I'm going to say it anyway. Because we do have cherry fox and the triathlon and marathons and northern peak riding and et cetera, et cetera. And I was told you could pay for a seventy-five-dollar sign exemption. And then I figured, okay, they're going to go one by one come to us to waive the sign exemption. But when I'm reading the and that's in the first and that about noise, the very end of the paragraph, it says, as well as any event that holds a valid event permit issued by the town of Gravenhurst. And the second and that about signs says, well, as same, as well as any event that holds a valid event permit issued by the town of Gravenhurst. So is that allowing every single event in town that has a valid permit have noise and signs?
Director?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to councillor Morphy. So the sign one, we, as I mentioned in my earlier piece, we'll be working with Development Services and by law to come up with a procedure for events. So as long as they're holding a valid permit with the town, which they've gone through the event process, they have a permit that's signed back to us, paying for the space or however, whatever space you're using, as long as they have a permit in place with us, then they're able to work with us and by law to to talk about signs. Yeah.
Okay, so wonderful, terrific. All that good stuff. But what about our businesses? Do we have to do, I know it doesn't involve in this, do we have to start a separate process to address the businesses in our community that want to put up signs? That's the whole. We've got to start that on our own.
I can't answer that question, I'm sorry.
Director Halford?
So the three-year worship to the councillor. So the question, so the events, the notion of that is that they're temporary signs, they go up, they come down. Businesses are a permanent sign and they go through the normal permitting process because they're going to need a building permit most likely and they we need to make sure that complies with the bylaw. The whole point of the sign bylaw as approved by council is to govern the look and feel of the signs in our community and the amount of them and where they're located and all of that. So for events, because they're transitory and they're, you know, the come and go, we're, I think it's it's a good thing to allow them an exemption to the sign bylaw. And to to clarify on the the review that's going to be doing, we're going to be doing, it's to make sure that they're not going in areas that are going to be blocking sightlines or causing safety issues or that they're not putting up monstrous, like little big lit signs, like allowing a blanket exemption just was gave me a bit of heart palpitations for for what's there. So so that's why that's in there. But so the difference is events equals transitory, businesses are more permanent, hopefully, and or long term, and they have to go through the normal process because they're not necessarily putting up those, you know, typically flimsier signs that are just meant for one event and go in and come out within a week kind of thing, or a couple of weeks.
Don't really want to wade down the rabbit hole of business sign events. Okay, so go ahead, councillor.
Really want to be crystal clear. So any event in this town that has a permit through you guys will be able to put up their signs and make a little noise during that time, right? That's how this reads? Yes, thank you.
Okay, councillor Varney?
Thank you through you. And I guess maybe my question's been answered, but the two questions, actually. One is, is the Dockside Festival of the Arts, is it in Gull Lake or is it down at the bay? I guess Dockside is down at the bay, but I wasn't sure. And my second question is, I guess, would the arts, the Autumn Arts Festival would be the same as far as signage, the same as an event?
If they have a permit? But it's a town on a town event. So but I'll let you answer the question about the the Dockside Festival.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Through you to councillor Varney. Dockside will be down at the Wharf. So their their plan is to be down in the Wharf in in August.
Okay, councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So my question is, the Gravenhurst Winter Carnival is a you've got it as a third-party event, but doesn't it run through the town?
Okay. Director?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to councillor Robinson. We have it listed in here as a just in case because if we need to apply for an SOP, if the if we don't partner with SOTUS or something happens, then we have to get a permit. So this just gives us that designation that we can actually go through with the permit. Yes, it is a municipally-run event, but we still need that significant event designation to be able to get the permit.
For alcohol? Okay. All right. So everybody, I mean, let's just recap. So the significant events that are listed all have to do with alcohol. And then every other event that we we have in town that gets a permit through the town will be told what sort of signage, how many signs, what size signs and location for signs. And that will be dealt with at the permit stage. Perfect. Okay, so we all understand who's covered, what's covered. I mean, this is a long thing. It's, you know, and then there's some specific things. I mean, the fire pits are covered. So I think you know, I think this makes it pretty clear for people, but just in case somebody's watching and wants to make sure they're included, they're included as long as they have a permit. Perfect. Okay, so does anybody else have any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, I will ask you to vote, please. And that carries, thank you. So we have one last thing for new business was the, it was moved by councillor Morphy and a seconder. Councillor Robinson? Be resolved that the correspondence from the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO, regarding communities brace for tariff impact be received for information. And councillor Morphy, you wanted to speak to this?
Yes, through your worship. I don't want to be soapboxy about this, but I really believe it's a good time to wear our red and white and single Canada and be everything Canadian. So I really just pulled this so that I could turn it over to CAO Scott Lucas to afford him the opportunity to let everyone know what measures the town of Gravenhurst and the district are taking in order to support our Canadian economy.
Mr. Lucas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's certainly been no shortage of opportunities for municipal education, information on the the types of things that that we can be doing as a municipality. Obviously, lots of, you know, by the day, there's all kinds of articles about what municipalities are doing across the province and and the country. I know each of us around the senior leadership team and beyond are spending a lot of time on webinars with our respective organizations to figure out what our options are, not the least of which is the municipal MFOA, which is the the finance group that Mr. Campbell sits on as well. But I think the main, the the most immediate response, and perhaps Ms. Halford or Ms. Taylor could elaborate more than I could, was the the response for the business community and making sure that we were providing as much support as we could there. So I know Ms. Taylor and her team were participating in a regional group that that led to basically a portal to to provide support for the business community. In the meantime, we've been doing a lot of analysis internally to see what the types of impacts might be. And of course, it's difficult to do when the you're assessing impacts for things that change by the day. But we've been doing as much of that as we can. We've provided a lot of information to AMO as well. They did some very early work to try and put together, you know, provincial impacts so that they could advocate advocate to the province and and beyond to to better support municipalities through what may be a bit of a difficult time, in particular, as it relates to our capital program. So I know Mr. Stacy and and Chief Kaylee did a lot of work very early on to try and put some some numbers to what the impacts might be. Again, challenging when you don't know exactly what it is you're dealing with. But so a lot of that work has occurred, looking at at options. And of course, the the community support was the the most immediate response by our economic development team. So, Madam Mayor, I think I'll stop there. And if Ms. Halford or Ms. Taylor want to jump in, that would be appreciated.
Director Halford?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just to supplement what the CAO accurately summarized as recently as today, the economic development officers across Muskoka, as they have been doing quite frequently, met and were were
were, were chatting about other activities that could be done to support the business community. And some research has been conducted now, and economic development staff will be reaching out to about 20 different businesses that, based on the research, that we feel that will be most impact, or could be most impacted by tariffs. And to see if they know about the Muskoka Tariff Hub that's been pulled together, which is the document that CAO Lucas mentioned, the, the website that's constantly being updated and refined and new, new data being provided on there. So that, that, that one-on-one interview, reach out is going to be happening by development, economic development staff to the business community. So it's kind of a change, every day is different, and we're trying to plan for literally the unplannable, but we're, we're doing, I, I think, a really great job. There's been lots of PR, actually, about how great a job that Muskoka, the Muskoka Group has done. Chair Lehman was on CBC Morning on the radio talking about it, which you wouldn't think that that would be Muskoka's response to the tariffs would be first and foremost on CBC's mind, but I think that's really great to show that we have a, a thriving business community here, and we're worried about it just as much as Windsor is. So that's what we're, a good summary of where we're at right now. And tomorrow might be totally different, but we're, we're doing the best we can. And shout out to the staff across Muskoka for working together and, and really pulling together to help the community.
Anybody else have anything to say on that subject? Well, I think part of the problem is the uncertainty, right? Like, it's so erratic. We don't know from one day to the next what's coming out of, I guess, Mar-a-Lago. It's not even the Oval Office, so. Anyway, I, the only positive I could say about this whole situation is, is how patriotic people have become. I think it's really incredible to see Canadians across the country. And there has been some, you know, some mentions, even Quebec, I shouldn't say that, but even Quebec is all elbows up, so let's all do our part and stick together and, and do what's right. And thank God, we don't, we're not paying for that $2 million fire truck, right, Chief, this year? Because that would, that would be certainly some uncertainty there. I think fire is one of the things that's majorly affected. So, good thing we have some, some good equipment in the, over at the fire hall, so, perfect. Okay, so with that, I do have a motion to accept this. Okay, so we are now going to go to Counselor Hunter, has an update about the public art. Oh, you can't even see it. I thought you could see it over my shoulder. Maybe we, is there a way we can get to it? Perfect. Okay, so Counselor Hunter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Yeah, I think if the clerk puts on her microphone, maybe we might be able to see. So my update for the Public Art Advisory Committee is that we are in collaboration with the Muskoka Discovery Center. We have organized two spaces within the municipal office to showcase public art and embrace local artists. So hopefully, we can get them up on the screen, the ones that are here in council chambers. The art is for sale, so you will see prices on them and who the artist is. All of the art is being curated through the Muskoka Discovery Center, so people can go there with their questions on the artist or, or any of the art that's for sale. The art is on a rotational, so fancy.
rotational?
It's, yeah, rotational. So you'll be seeing different, different artwork over the, the months and the seasons. We encourage the public to view the art, so not only in the council chambers here, but also in the front hall of Town Hall. So you can come during business hours. There are no tours that, that are booked. You just come and, and view the art. There's going to be an official open house in May to kick off this new project. We hope everyone will join us. This featured artist is, I don't know if I'm saying this correctly, but Ron Lee Marshall, and is the same in, at the front of Town Hall as well. So absolutely stunning. Yeah, we look forward to continuing and seeing all the new different artists showcase their work.
Counselor Varney?
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Hunter. So how do artists get to apply, to be shown in the Town Hall or the Discovery Center? Because I'm sure artists at the Arts at the Albion would really be interested. Thank you.
Sorry, Counselor Hunter?
Thank you, through you. Everything is being curated through the Muskoka Discovery Center, so they can go through there, but there will be open calls for submissions, so.
Okay, well, I think that's great, because we, we're talking about what we are going to put in the walls, and I think it looks really fabulous. So thank you to the Arts Committee who worked on that, because I know there were several ideas around, how do we fill that space? So I think this is a really great way, and again, partnerships are the way to success. So, thank you, and thanks for serving on that committee. Okay, so next is me, my update. I'm going to be pretty brief. Some things that I wanted to talk about are the spring freshet and flooding. As you know, it's a big concern. There's still a lot of snow out there, so there are some sandbags available. I think the best way to is be prepared. I think that's important. I think both our fire chief and our director of infrastructure will be putting out social media as to, you know, ways to keep yourself safe during these times, stay away from rushing water, all the, all the things that keep our people safe. And the, the, the sandbags, there's a couple of locations for them, but they're traditionally where we have had flooding in the past. So if you, and feel free to call the town, it's on our social media. So that is out there, and be safe, everyone. Hopefully, spring is, is, has sprung. It'll be a while before we can see the grass, but it's certainly, it feels, it feels like spring is in the air, so. Secondly, I wanted to congratulate several people who were nominated for Women of Distinction Awards. And so one, Kelly Hamilton, and I'm afraid she's not here today, but I'm sure she's tuning in, like so many do. So we wanted to say congratulations to her, you know, great asset to the Opera House and couldn't do without her. Michelle Robinson was nominated, as we know, and it was fabulous, and we all know what sort of commitment Michelle has made over the years. And, and I don't want to say, and least of all, being on council, but Michelle, you've really, over the last, I don't know how long, however long you've been here, I know that your dedication to the community and the, the fairgrounds and Gutsy Walk and all of these things, you know, is, is pretty remarkable. So congratulations, and I understand it was a great night. And of course, Penny, Counselor Varney, Penny Varney was nominated for a King Charles and a, and a recipient of the King Charles Coronation Medal. So, and that was, I was going to say presented, I guess presented is the right word, at the Women of Distinction Award, and really, really good to see. And I mean, Penny needs no introduction. Penny's been around, I don't want to say, I don't want to say forever, but, you know, Penny has had her hand in, in so many things, I, you know, too, too many to list. And she tells us about them all, every time, all the time, so stay tuned. But no, so congratulations to three remarkable women that we are, we all have the pleasure of knowing and working with, so. And I understand, so I guess we can do that. Congratulations. I do want to recognize that we are aware that there are other community members who, who have been nominated for the King Charles Award, and we, from our community, and we are waiting on to hear about them. And so congratulations to them as, as they are revealed. So I know that, that, that at least one person that, from our community, a well-known person that we'll all go, oh, is getting one on Thursday, so I don't want to spill the beans. So I won't. I'll just stop there. I also wanted to talk about, and these are things that are to come, but I don't get this opportunity. I don't get an open mic very often, so I'm going to take the opportunity to talk about the GH Bursary, which is GHS Bursary, which is coming up. We'll be looking, and, and you'll see that on our socials soon, how we have a, I mean, I think it's a fair, you know, it's a fairly significant $2,000 to a student at, at Gravenhurst High School. So stay tuned for the details on that. That'll hit our socials, and of course, we'll be in touch with the school to try and get, you know, lots of nominations, lots of remarkable kids in this community, so sure it won't be hard to find one to, to receive that. Senior of the Year, as we know, that is a tradition in this community, is to present the Senior of the Year Award to Senior of the Year, you know, a senior that does some volunteering in the community and, and has done, you know, significant contributions. And so we are, again, that, that will be going out very shortly, again, I think even tomorrow. So pass it along to your friends and family, and if you know someone or, you know, know someone who knows someone, especially after coming out of the storm, I think that there's probably going to be, you know, a lot of, a lot of take-up on the nominations, which is always very difficult to choose, but. Okay, and that will be presented at the Mayor's Tea, which we had our first meeting about today. And I think I can share with you, the theme this year is going to be Canadian Women of Music. So I just thought, speaking about Canada, and I thought that that would be our theme. We would be able to find someone to do some of our favorite Canadian classic songbirds. So, anyway, that's where we're headed, and that is my update. So thank you for indulging that. And then with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn? Thank you. A motion to adjourn. Counselor Varney and Counselor Hunter, please vote. And surprise, that carries. Okay, so now we've already adopted the agenda for council, because we did have a closed session. Counselors, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest on the council agenda this afternoon? Okay, seeing none. Council Minutes is moved by Counselor Morphy, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Be it resolved that Council Minutes from February 11th, 2025 be adopted as circulated. All in favor? Please vote. And that carried, I assumed? I missed it, sorry. It is moved by Counselor Strength, who I forgot about on there, but moved by Counselor Saying, and seconded by Counselor Varney. Be it resolved that the committee, the whole meeting from February 11th, 2025 be adopted as circulated. And that carries, thank you. Okay, thank you. It's moved by Counselor Jorgensen, seconded by Counselor Varney. Be it resolved the following bylaw be read, passed, and engrossed into the bylaw book? Bylaw number 202516, Authorization to Execute Visitor Services Agreement with Gravenhurst Chamber of Commerce. And that carries, thank you. And it is moved by Counselor Morphy, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202517, to confirm the council meeting held on March 18th, 2025, be passed. And a motion to adjourn. Counselor Jorgensen and Counselor Morphy, please vote.